Revenue recovery.
Yeah, is everybody ready? Okay, we'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming out. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Anything, Dan, any changes?
Nope.
Decisions? Ryan?
No.
No, okay. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, anything for administration on consent agenda?
Are all of the permit conditions met for A two D?
So you can reference that if you'd like to take a look at that permit. And I know we've had a number of conversations about it. The biggest key component to it is towards the end of the permit here. If you go to the requested special kind of items he's looking for on page, oh, let's see here. Would be page eight of the permit, but I don't know which page is in the packet. But if you look at the exemptions requested, so question number sixteen. Are you requesting exemptions or waivers of the city's special events policy? If yes, describe. So yes. Vendor is requesting to be exempted from the fencing requirements for alcohol sales. Site for sales is defined as the area of Veterans Park, west of the Aquatic Center, north of Seventh Street, east of the West Pavilion, and south of the Axis Road entering Veterans Park. In this compacting to this area, vendor may sell alcoholic beverages in accordance with legal requirements and having made their insurance provider aware of the non-exclusive nature of the venue. So included also was, everyone should have received a copy of that insurance where we are co-insured. So I think if the requirements that the mayor and I had discussed were met, generally speaking.
And the insurance certificate does list the city as well as agents, employees, et cetera?
Yep.
As additional insureds?
That's right. It certainly is on the vendor to, you know, make sure that things are done properly.
Yeah, but if we're not listed on that insurance, that doesn't help us. So I just wanted to make sure that was actually.
Yep, no, the city's on that.
Yeah, so it's his responsibility to make sure nobody, I guess, takes beer out of that area. So that's what he wanted.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, no visitors, public. Mayor's report, we're getting the, after Duane left, got the personnel committee back going, meeting on a regular basis. And I'd like to appoint Councilmember Ferris to that, if that's all right with the rest of the council. Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, I think it'd be a motion.
I'll make the motion to appoint Councilmember Ferris to the Personnel Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Do I need to abstain from voting on that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, then I, I agree.
You're for it.
Sure.
You're opposed to it, then we have a question to ask.
I'm not opposed.
Thanks for doing that. That was like, you did say you wanted to do it, so.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. On to old business, number one, software changeover.
So including your packet, you have a number of items. Some of them are whole over from last time. There's a lot of new information in response to the questions that councilmembers had our last meeting. And I know a couple of councilmembers weren't able to make it that meeting. So glad that we have a little different subset today. And so with that, I want to turn it over to Jessica to talk about kind of what she's been able to work on and get the information that the council had looked for. Namely, I think there was a term length and contract and then some of the financial questions. So go ahead, Jessica.
Yep, so in talking to Cody, who is our representative for Tyler Tech, there is a three-year contract and he's asked, every three years you have the option to sign a new contract, which is typically a three to five percent increase in some of the fees. That's what they're relatively making for the past five years. And then they highly suggest doing a three-year contract. You don't have to, but it is very suggested to because otherwise you can kind of play the market on the rates and stuff. I did go through this, kind of tweaked it a little bit. You'll see in the packet that there is a new proposal amount. So I was able to get some of the fees down to, I believe it was about thirty-four thousand. One of the things that was taken either to kind of tweak that up was MyCivic. So I did take out project accounting and add it into MyCivic, which is the customer portal of it. So customers can go on, they can have it, they see, kind of what we talked about last time is it has a community calendar on it, so you can put all the library stuff out there and everything. I really think that that would be a really good engagement tool for the citizens of Cassin. So I did add that back in. It's very similar to what was presented at the last meeting, just a few of the software changes. And then the contract that we had talked about, which is a three-year contract, and then the interest, the percentages would change typically three to five percent. It's a lot of information. That three-year contract's like twenty pages.
So any questions that anybody has?
Is the three to five percent total, after the three years, or is it three to five every year? And then they're going to add it together and make it fifteen?
It's after your contract ends, so every three years.
They don't lump it.
And that substantial one-time fee is truly a one-time?
One-time, yep. And then you just pay these recurring fees, which is thirty-four thousand two seven. You pay that every year. And they take him, you were an SLS man, but they take care of our PCI compliance for us. They take care of all of our live and add extra software. Basically making sure that we're not getting hacked or anything like, because they have to have their own software as well. So it's all live, everything, this will move us into the right direction. Jared is kind of the push on this for utilities. So he's kind of looking at prepay, so you can prepay your electric and stuff. So this will be able to give us that option. Whereas MyCivic really wasn't moving in that direction for a good three to five years. And so that's why after more consensus, Tyler was probably a better fit for what the future of Cassin is looking at.
So when you say prepay, you're talking like with some of our snowbirds that they could take care of it in advance?
Yep, you would do like LP, you could prepay that in advance. And then after you run out, you pay them at your rate.
Anything?
No, I don't think so.
So the recommendation is for Tyler, correct? Okay, and I am all for the automatic, the software updates being taken care of by the company instead of our staff, frees up our staff for time than what we do here, instead of being IT people. And the PCI compliance, having to do that in our home, that's a huge thing to have them take care of that because it's burdensome and time consuming, and there's a lot of risk on our staff instead of that, so.
I currently do that right now.
Yeah.
One of the big things too that Tyler, and they kind of set themselves away from MyCivic, is they handle everything on a customer basis. So right when we implement everything, they will prepare basically an entire customer portfolio to send out to customers. They'll help us with all of the verbiage, all of the contracts, kind of the MyCivic platform, you can kind of see in the packet. They'll show you exactly how to use things. So that to me is big because it's not just coming from us. It's well-driven in, it's well-thought-out. Rather than us just sending out a letterhead being like, hey, this is out there. They'll send pictures. They have all these pamphlets and everything that can be sent out too. And I feel like that, for a small city, that is a big thing. Because, you know, as Ben mentioned before, we're more of an elder-based. So that'll be really helpful to get people moving in that direction, to get people to pay online and stuff, and kind of alleviate some of that, so that they can see everything online or on their phone. So it's an option all the way around. That's really well-rounded for our city.
Is there a way to use that communication from the city to the public in the event of emergencies? Like when we had the floods afterwards, we were looking for a way, how do we alert people to something quickly? That that's able to be able to do that too?
It has the city alerts out there, so if they're signing up for tax, it's an email, it can automatically be sent out. Same as your utility bills, like I mentioned, it does, I mean, Ian can kind of speak to that too. We kind of looked at the calendar on that too, so all your calendar events will be on that too. So if someone wants to say, hey, when is Festival of the Park? They can go on their app and it's right there. Everything can be out there as long as we utilize it to that.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, I'll make the motion to move forward with the Tyler upgrade. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Dan, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Jessica. Number two, emergency plan review.
Sure, and this is mostly informational for you. I did want to let you know that obviously we do take a look at that emergency plan with the last, you know, changeover in council. This is updated version. It's an updated version, basically just to include some new staff and some new other personnel in the county. So you can see there, we've turned over on that page with the, sort of the tree there. We've got a new safety staffer, Brad Gunnerson, new liaison staffer, Amy Hanvik, and the new information staffer would be Jessica Gunnerson, new finance director, position being filled by Jessica Royer. So not a lot of changes to it, but just something we take a look at periodically. Want to let you know that it's been updated with some new staff and those new, you know, contacts. So that's all it is. If there's any questions on that, I'd be glad to take those. Otherwise, just pretty straightforward.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Anybody have questions? Okay, on to surplus, old fire truck.
Yes, including your package, you have a couple of different memo sort of updates from the fire department with some information regarding the truck they'd like to surplus out. It's a nineteen ninety-one Pierce Dash with fifteen thousand one hundred thirty-three miles. And it's got a thousand gallon water tank. So I don't know what the value is. The fire department has arranged, they think it might go for. They'd like to have a motion from council to surplus this out, so we can get it listed for sale via the public auction kind of mentality. We've done that in the past. They have had a couple other departments that have been interested in it. And let them know that it was best practice really to allow it to have other bids on it, so.
Okay, any questions on that?
Where would the money go that they make for that?
I'll maybe return to the general fund.
Okay. On to update on fifteen.
If they could have a motion to surplus that up, that'd be great.
Okay, got it.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Tim. On to the update on fifteen Seventh Street House, Ian.
Yes, so at the last council meeting, I had said that I was going to follow up with an update on this property. So included in your packet, I've written a memo describing what I've done since the last council meeting. So basically, I followed the recommendations that were described to me by the Dodge County Public Health Director. And I also went out to the site and took some more pictures as well. So you can see in that memo, the pictures there showing the status of the property. Basically, I found that it's in a worse condition than it was since my previous visit to the site. And in response to that visit, I had sent a letter acknowledging that some improvements have been made. But now since then, it seems that the property has deteriorated further since that point. And last week, I did receive a third documented complaint this summer about the specific property. It was the same general complaints about all the items on the property and rodents and rats and dishes and that. So that's where things are. With the path that I followed by the public health director, there's supposed to be some sort of report that I get once they go through their process. But I haven't received it yet just because it takes a couple of weeks to get that report back. That's where things are, really.
Okay, we'll look forward to your update after you hear from public health. So is it with public health right now, when you say other agency, or what other agency?
It's a different state agency, not public health directly.
Can you share which agency it is?
It's the State Department of Human Services.
Okay.
The same person complaining three times, or is it three different people?
Um, it's the same woman, the same person. What would be different?
Okay, thanks, Ian. Appreciate it. On to new business, two thousand twenty-three budget review.
So including your package, you've got a couple items. I've got the league's guide for cities, as well as a debt memo that I've been working on kind of to just lay out the rationale for internally financing some of our projects, such as the fire truck itself. We're internally financing that. So in an era of higher interest rates, it's kind of, I think it makes sense to try and utilize funds we have on hand to fund some of these projects if possible. You also have a copy of the twenty-three budget there, just so you can kind of see where we're coming from. And then included in your package, you have a copy of the expenditure budget sheets for the current status of the budget. So we did have a couple of updates to that. I had received kind of a late-breaking library budget update after meeting last night. So that was inserted into your document. So you can kind of see where we're at with it. Most of the increases are generally inflationary. I will highlight the library because they do have one of the larger percentage asks. Currently, they're looking at an eleven percent increase to their budget. So I think that would be something the council will have to give me some feedback on. There are a couple of big-ticket items I know that they'd like to do there. So basically, this is here for you to review right now where we're at. The general fund is actually looking at a reduction, which is unusual for the preliminary budget for our first look. We're looking at of a small reduction in the general fund. So I have asked the department heads who are involved in the general fund to, you know, certainly be very conscious of the fact that we have a lot of debt service coming on. And as a result, especially in public works, I appreciate the work from those department heads, we're looking at about a five thousand dollar reduction in the general fund, which, that includes all the wage increases and with our union contracts, includes a significant increase in healthcare costs. So we're still seeing a slight reduction in general fund. A big jump in the library fund, that's going from four oh nine, four nineteen, and twenty-three to four sixty, nine ninety-one, so about fifty-one thousand dollars increase there. And there's a two thousand dollar increase in the EDA levy that's currently slated. So all told, those really aren't, you know, in terms of aggregate, a four million dollar budget, they're not a huge chunk. The biggest chunk of levy this year is new levy is coming in the debt service. So we've got a.
Is that in our packet?
No.
Can you share that with us?
Sure, I can sure send it out. This is just some, well, this is an active document. Like I said, I've just got, I've got some.
Because you're going to get the first, the kind of a cover sheet that shows the levy?
I have a breakdown that I'll send out to councilmembers. So I just wanted you to sort of see the budgets. And for example, like the electric budget, we were just able to have our meeting this afternoon. So it was preliminary tonight, but I'll send out that top sheet too, so you can kind of see it, see where we're at.
Thank you.
We're seeing a big spike. Public safety is about a two hundred thousand dollar increase for the public safety building. The twenty twenty-three Bravo, that street project is about forty thousand dollar increase. Obviously, it's a new project. The truck equipment fund's flat. And then we're also seeing a big spike from the Highway Fifty-seven project. So last year, we levied fifty-nine thousand dollars. This year, because the, it was the first year of a bond, so the amount was lesser, was an interest-only kind of a payment. This next year, it's a hundred and sixty-six thousand. So all told, that's about, let's see, hundred forty, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that makes up a lion's share of our levy increase as debt service. So right now, the preliminary sheet, like I said, I'll send it out to you, is ten point seven seven one percent. So my goal is obviously to get into single digits before we have our levy set in September. And the target I have right now for a year-end, which of course is informed by the council, is to try and get it under six percent. There'll be a lot of cuts required to do that, just because so much of it is debt service. And there's only so much you can do with the debt service, you know. And I do encourage the council, remember, you know, it is a project that was voted for by the public, you know, and as a result, we have to, you have to pay for it, so. It does take into account some revenue changes. We did see a jump in the para-aid. So that's something that's going to be real positive for us. That'll help cut some of those increases. And then at the end of the year, we'll actually be able to look at our revenues in more detail too. So we've received the first half taxes, the first half LGA. One example would be the Aquatic Center. You know, that's a spot where we typically see a big fund balance loss. It'll be interesting to see what the revenue looks like this year. We've done a much better job with our controls on the concessions. And last year, we had some controls, some wastage there. It's a nice way of saying there was a lot of stuff left over at the end of the year. But they've done a really good job, and I appreciate Jessica and staff at the pool doing a little different way of acquiring some of those items. We've been getting some of the items from Hy-Vee and Sam's Club instead of doing it through Reinhardt. So that's been a real cost savings to us. And the staff out there, Julia's been doing a good job too. So suffice to say, I think we'll see a little bit higher revenues that'll be able to be brought into this as well, along with some reductions. So in the fullness of time, you know, we're going to try and cut it down as much as we feel comfortable doing, so. Does anybody have any questions on any of those in particular? Like I said, the one I just kind of wanted to highlight was that the biggest jump there was in the library. So, and I know I spoke with Councilmember Ferris about that this morning. From their meeting, she had some feedback on why there's some of the bigger increases. They're looking at some shelving and some different things. They'd like to make some building improvements, which may have to be spread out over a couple more years. And I think that's something that we'll certainly consider, so.
And this is updated with the electric after the meeting today?
Yes, that's correct. So yeah, your last budget sheet would be the electric, and that was new as of this afternoon, so.
Okay.
So all told, I mean, if you look at our, so general fund, you kind of got, I'll get those numbers out to you. In terms of our proprietary funds, you'll see that generally speaking, they're performing well year-to-date. And we anticipate that to continue based on the weather conditions and things like that. We haven't had a real wet year, so that's been a benefit in terms of I and I and things like that. You do note in there that the ice arena is scheduled to lose about forty-six thousand dollars right now. So half of that would be our responsibility to subsidize, so about twenty-three thousand dollars. That is based on them having a additional full-timer as part of their staffing costs. So that was part of this preliminary budget. So it's possible that if, if that wanted to be, you know, if we wanted to eliminate something there, that could be a possibility of reduction. Otherwise, electric fund slated for a small gain. Water is a balanced budget. It's not slated to have a real significant increase there, so we may have to look at the rate changes there. And then sewer has a decent number at the end of the year too, so. And those are based on some moderate increases to rates. In electric, we're not anticipating any power rate increases at all this year, but we are looking at a base fee increase, simply because we're looking at changing the cost of service onto the base fees as opposed to the electric rates themselves, which is a trend in the industry. You'll note, like, for example, local ops in our area have shifted a lot of their costs out of their cost of service because that's a less volatile rate as opposed to an energy usage, which is so much more variable. Any questions anyone has?
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right. Number two, the ZSRL agreement for twenty-three twenty-four is in your packet. Are there any questions on that? So they're picking up twenty percent of the package, which is about thirty thousand dollars. Other than that, I don't think anything changed from prior year. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Mel. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Administrator's report.
Sure. Go right into that. So a couple of items tonight, and then I've got a couple other items that I wanted to highlight. Just to note that we are going out for RFP for both insurance and auditors. So that's something that I've gotten the auditor one ready and give it to Jessica, so she's ready to send it out. Have you sent it out yet? No, so somebody's sending that out, and same thing for insurance. I don't anticipate there being a lot of people who are looking at the insurance, one, we had two last time. But so it's after their three years are up, it's time for that RFP. Couple other things, obviously, we had that FireHawk groundbreaking, which, thank you to the mayor and to Councilmember Ferris for attending, was very well-received. We had some good positive media coverage. The demo has moved very quickly. The building's all gone. So if you haven't been out there, you know, it's kind of interesting to see that sort of a different look. I think that in the fullness of time, it's going to be a really nice addition to the community and a nice spruce up on Main Street as well, so that's going to look really nice. The Personnel Committee did go through some new discussions on earned sick time and safe time, so that's a change, HR. And we are going to be reviewing the personnel policy. Linda, we're bringing that to us with some changes that the league is recommending. I talked a little about the budget, some credit card fees and notifications. Like, this is something like was mentioned during the Tyler conversation, that it would be nice to have it done professionally because it eliminates the responsibility for us not to make a mistake on that, something that's always a concern. And then city hall hours, based on discussion with staff and the Personnel Committee, we're recommending that the city hall hours amended, so that the seasonal shift would become permanent. It would be, hours on Friday would be operating from eight AM to one PM. Typically, we see a lot of interaction earlier in the week. And there are staff that work in the afternoons even after we close in the summertime. This would just allow them an opportunity to work without potential interruption. So it allows them a chance to catch up. I know, for example, Ian often has meeting packets and things like that he has to work on. So that was a recommendation from Personnel Committee. So other changes that were contemplated, such as closing at four thirty PM, won't be, we won't be looking at that at this time just because of the number of visits and calls we do get during that time period. So I don't know if you wanted to speak to that from Personnel Committee at all, or?
No, I mean, people are used to it closing at noon right now, part of the year, and they think it's closed at noon year-round. So I have no problem with that.
Okay, that's all I have for my update. I do have another item in there, the MMU A delegate form. So I think I highlighted at the last meeting that we did receive an award from MMU A for a, it's called system innovation, using our Tanla system. It's one of the newer, we're one of the smaller utilities to utilize that in the state. So that is something where Jared did submit that, and they did, they are giving us that award. I am attending the MMU A meeting, their annual meeting, in later this month. However, they did send this to me, and they noted that the last person they have registered as a delegate to vote on MMU A matters was Randy Lenth. So it has not been updated for fifteen years. So they're asking that, they were asking the council would update this so that we would have someone who could vote on their matters at MMU A's conferences and meetings, their business meetings.
So Charlie?
Yeah, Charlie would be the alternate, I would be the designee, and then we would be covered, I think. One of us would be able to attend typically. So that's what I'd be asking the council to approve tonight.
Anybody want to nominate somebody else besides Tim or Charlie?
Nope.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Tim was the primary, Charlie is the alternate.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's amazing how we agreed on that.
Thank you very much. Very interesting business meeting. Other than that, I don't have anything else to highlight tonight, except that, like I said, we did have the groundbreaking, which was well-received, well-attended. I don't think we're anticipating a ribbon-cutting for the Highway Fifty-seven project right now, based on feedback. I'm open to it, of course. If council would like to do that, it certainly would be, it would be interesting. But I think the key is just to get the road open, so people can use it more than anything else. There is going to be a lot of things that they have to come back for, just walking through. I mean, I see a lot of potential areas where the concrete's cracking already and stuff like that, which is not unusual when they're pouring, I mean, the wall, for example, if you've been up there, there's a couple of spots that I'm not real thrilled about, but something we'll be working with MINDOT and talking about, so.
Is there a question in there? Do you want to have ribbon-cutting?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it is transformational for our community, I will say that. You know, I had an opportunity yesterday when I was out for a walk with my family after, towards the evening. You know, we took the store out, we went right up on the new roundabout up on Sixteenth and kind of went through the interchange. And I do think, you know, as you come into Cassin going forward, people are going to go, you know, this is a very different look. I would say almost a modernization to the look to Cassin in terms of when you're coming through town. But, you know, it's not something that, obviously, I just think we should celebrate. If we took all the pain of suffering through it, there should be some celebration towards it also.
Maybe after we repave the parking lot to liquor store and.
Yeah, and that might be what it is. And maybe we do do that, you know, that's fair, we'll have it all cleaned up then too.
Because we'll have a better idea when that'll be done.
Yeah, and I don't know, like, when the landscaping up there in that corner is going to be done either. Because, I mean, it'd be nice to have that green space kind of finished too, before we do anything. Because, yeah, I mean, we want to get the road open for sure. But I do think that as a community, I mean, ten million dollar project right to the middle of town, should, you know, a lot of taxpayer dollars, a lot of bonding money should be celebrated. And, you know, no more streetlights. I think Brad's got one in his garage that he can bring and he can put up as a display or something like that.
I've got one.
Now, you've got one at the prop department, sure. A lot of other communities do things like that, I know, especially in the downtown corridor here. But I know I've spoken with the Chamber, and they're certainly open to helping with that. Anytime we can shine a little focus and attention on our downtown, it's also positive too, for those folks that kind of struggle with this. And, you know, anyway, that's just a thought, so.
Let's get it open first, we can.
Yeah, hey, I'm all for getting it open, believe me. I don't want to do that.
We could schedule the ribbon-cutting, but we'd have to keep moving it.
Yeah.
True.
With that, we're going to move on to the Administrator's report.
Good to meet you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, we're going to be close with the Fifty-seventh schedule. So two items tonight, the first one, the twenty twenty-three Santeri Sewer Improvement Project, asking for your consideration resolution there. And then the second item, project updates, which also kind of includes a resolution for some funding stuff on our Sixteenth Street Roundabout. So with that said, I'll jump into the first one. In your council packet is a RCA request for council action for the twenty twenty-three Santeri Sewer Improvement Project to ultimately potentially pass a resolution to go off for bid. You can see a quick background there. After the flood in two thousand and nineteen, we were put to work to kind of look at our Santeri Sewer system and decrease the frequency that it backs up into homes, decrease the I and I. We presented a report back in January outlining some improvements, kind of two-phased. I went back to staff and we reviewed it, and ultimately come up with the project that's in your council packet. that's in your council packet tonight, with the idea that we shifted a lot of that work to our, I'll call our Mastin Creek trunk line project, because that's been the trunk line that causes problems in the northwest part of town. Does leak, but it hasn't backed up traditionally as much as the Mastin Creeks. We shifted some of that work in that area. We eliminated the work in southwest Casson that we have some bonding bill money on. There's going to be moving forward to reconstruct it, so we don't want to, you know, spend any money on maintaining stuff that we're going to be reconstructing the next couple of years. So worked through that with staff, reviewed it. It has been budgeted within the sanitary sewer enterprise fund to pay for this work, so it is a budgeted item. And then ultimately, why are we doing it? Because I think we all need to ask ourselves that. And as to again, reduce the inflow and infiltration, the groundwater, the rainwater that gets into our sanitary sewer that is frequently backed up into the homes and bypassed into Mastin Creek. So project schedule, looking at again, the advertisement right away. Being back here at the second meeting in August to consider awarding the project. We're not necessarily bound on anything yet. Looking at doing this over the winter. These lining companies that, as part of the project, they like to do that over the winter. So we've kind of left the schedule open there. I think it's, talking to some contractors, they're ready to go. They've got a lot of work done this year, and they're actually looking for some work this fall. So I think we're going to have a real good competitive bidding environment at this point. So I think it's a good time to kind of pull the trigger on this project. So with that said, there is a resolution to consider. That is a third item. And the plans and specifications are in the, in the council packet, if you'd like to look at them. But again, it's generally along that Mastin Creek area there. We're doing some spot repairs in the sanitary sewer. We're doing some, we call it cured and placed liner. We basically put a sock inside of our sanitary sewer, blow it up with some resin, make it hard, and it's a pipe within a pipe. And then there's some manhole casting replacements along kind of that corridor. And you can even see some along Mastin Creek there to replace those castings. That's had ultimately failed, one of the floods of 2019. And there's some castings kind of spread around town that Charlie and the public work staff has hit with the snowplows. So the damage to them, or we can't find them, or they're buried. So there's some other castings to be replaced there in the project. So with that said, there is a resolution, the last item for your consideration. And again, that just authorizes us to go out for bids for the project. We'll be back here on August 23rd with a project to potentially award. With that, I'll pause and answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Brandon? Sounds good to me. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids for the 2023 sanitary sewer improvement project.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, Brandon.
Right, second item, project updates. And I'll blend in first, our 16th Street Roundabout, there is a resolution to ultimately request stated funding advance for our 16th Street Roundabout. So we have these things called municipal state aid funds. We have X amount available in our municipal state aid bank. We get money every year coming in based on our size and traffic and whatnot. So we've ultimately spent that now, as we paid the contractor to construct that project. We've ultimately asked them for the grant they received, but we are going to have to borrow ahead. This was planned as part of our funding for the project. So this resolution is ultimately formally requesting those funds from MINDOT. Slightly over 1.2 million, that's what I requested for in advance. That's more than what we're likely going to need. I think we need about 800,000, 900,000. That includes the electrical cost to relocate the Excel power lines that currently the electric fund is paid for. So I think Tim and staff are going to reimburse electrical funds, so that's included in there. So with that said, I'd ask for your consideration for the resolution to formally request the funds from MINDOT. And happy to answer any questions, obviously.
Okay.
How far out, do we borrow in advance again?
And can you put the revised numbers? So we have a little higher MSA number now, does that, does that in the calculation?
Yeah, so we get like 340,000 a year of municipal state aid funds.
So does that reduce the number of years that we need to borrow?
Yeah, it'll be like three years, yeah.
Three years?
Three years, so, three, yeah, about three years.
But we would still have two years we could borrow ahead for another project if we wanted, for example, moving on that western leg of this project.
Yep, and there's some other funding avenues available. As part of the last state session, there's been some other funding of things available.
That Alro, if you're thinking of?
Yep, Alro passed some money in it. That's where we get funding for the 16th Street going east. So that could be a potential, potential project that we get some funding, so.
I know you've mentioned in the past that the, some of the contractors seem interested in additional work this year. Hazelton, for example, you know, seems like they're going to be a little short on work. So I mean, I just, that's something I think the council might be interested in knowing what the timeframe would be for finishing that. We get a lot of questions about, when are you going to finish that, you know, project? And I, if you give them the same answer, like, we'd like to finish it, but funding is always an issue. And if we can do it without any additional cost bear, you know, cost of the taxpayers, for local taxpayers at least, that would be beneficial.
Absolutely. In addition to that, we do, I think at a staff level, need to talk about an ex application, what that timeline is, because even if we had funding today for it, it still takes a year or two to get kind of it constructed, so. I mean, we're expecting a slower on the next two years too. And there's not a lot of housing that cuts back and a lot of our contractors do reconstruction, so. And it's been a great year. They've gotten, you know, projects done, and they're kind of looking for things this fall. I think across the board, we're seeing some of the metro contractors come down in this area and start competing. So it's going to be slow, I think, for the next couple of years, so.
When you use those, those calculations on MSA, you're basically trying to designate roads that are busy roads? Is that what your, your kind of gist is?
Yeah, so MSA dollars are assigned to every city in the state of Minnesota over 5,000 people. And it's based on two things. One, your population, so half of it goes strictly on population. The second one is how heavy the roads are used. So you can allocate a certain percentage of your system, 20% of your roads, can be allocated as municipal state aid systems. And they got to connect to like trunk highways or other municipal state aid roads. So we have a system in town, and we actually, I think about a year or two ago, actually.
Realigned, yeah.
Moved it from kind of the downtown, third, fourth, and fifth by the old school area, not a lot of traffic. We actually moved it up to 16th Street, knowing, one, that we needed to do it to be able to use this funding. But two, we know that that road is going to be used and we're going to generate traffic. Traffic equals more money. So we want to put that system on roads that are heavily used, so. Fifth out by the school, 16th Street going out to Dodge County. Seventh is a municipal state aid road. We use municipal state aid road to be on City Hall, it doesn't have a lot of traffic. But fifth is pretty heavily traveled. Third is on it, and then Fifth Avenue going up to the schools on it. So yeah, seventh, east, west, seven streets on the system. So we've looked at it, we've at a staff level, and we've assigned it. So and as we grow, we get to add more into our system too. I suspect one time, at one point, we're going to have Mastin Creek Parkway on our municipal state aid system at some point, as we continue to develop the northeast, but.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Right. How so, you said three years, you borrowed out too?
Yep, you can borrow max five years, MINDOT will let you borrow ahead. So we were storing up about 1.5 million, and then we can borrow ahead this one point, just under 1.3.
So there's still be, oh yeah.
So there will be negative in the bank, and then every year we'll keep, keep getting out of the hole, if you will. That's what the council, previous councils and this council have elected to do. That was the most important project. So I think the more, to Tim's point, is the more that we can bring in other funds for that last leg is going to be super important. We've talked about Dodge County, they're ready to write the letter of recommendation for any application we go for, so they're all on board, so.
The number one question I'm asked, besides when is the roundabout going to be done? Is when are we going to connect that road? Because so many people from northwest would use that.
Absolutely.
As a way to get through town.
It'd be a great acquisition and great road.
Especially as we see potential growth on the northwest side. I mean, if Mr. Shreve's property develops and some of those other properties potentially west of that may develop over time too, it makes sense. And with Critchup coming in, that'll be a, people will want to be able to cut across and go over there too, so.
Yes, sir. All right, any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the resolution requesting state aid funds advance for the 16th Street Roundabout.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Stan, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, appreciate it. Anything else, Brandon?
No, we'll just add, we talked about 16th Street Roundabout, 57. And I think the latest date that was given was Saturday, opened that up. Now they're talking about probably Wednesday, they still have the strippers coming in and add some stripes. So actually drove the roundabouts today, they thought they drove pretty well, and they're putting signs up, but they're just probably not going to get it done by Sunday, so. That's the new schedule. I don't know if MINDOT's officially sent that out or not, but they're talking probably Wednesday. Update on that, you probably noticed the northeast water tower is gone. They're just going to come back and demo that wellhouse, it's kind of by the pit gate there. So that's planned, I think, next week. And then we got some final punch list stuff, so we're wrapping that project up. And then our 2023 street project, we had a pre-con, they're talking about next weekend scheduling that. So that's going to be starting here. And then we'll send notices out to the property owners and have a construction contact once that gets going. So we've had a couple of questions at City Hall, like, are they coming or not? And if they are, just relax. We've left an open schedule, and now they've got all their big paving projects done, so they're coming, so. We'll hammer that out here in the next couple of years. It'll come together pretty quickly, so.
One thing I wanted to note on 57 as well is, you know, we were able to get MINDOT to resurface that section between 11th and the roundabout too, which I think is a really good thing. Because leaving that three or four blocks with undone would have just been, it would have soured the whole project, I think. So I appreciate being in contact with Brandon to try and get that done, because I think it's going to just, like I said, I see this as really transformational for the community. I mean, taking a road that was just shot and making it something that, that's really something people remember for good.
Absolutely, and they actually paved that today, so it's paved from the roundabout all the way down to 34, so. 16th Street to 34, so they'll stripe that also when they stripe it next week. And then they did do some work, maintenance work north of the roundabout. They've paved some of those.
Right, is that?
Yeah, they, it was half done last weekend, so.
I was just going to ask about that.
And that's going to be back on their plan to do at some point. I don't have a for sure date.
Are they still planning on doing that Manorville project next year?
Yep, it's happening next year.
Okay.
Into roundabout, aren't they?
They're not getting around, actually, they are north of town.
16th Street.
Lost here already.
Yeah, County 16, but that's not.
Right by the Hubble House, they're going to take out half the block. Anyway, we'll send them a resolution that.
Are they taking any signs down? Any no parking signs? Are they going to eliminate some of those?
No, we talked with them, but I mean, it's signed per the.
There's so many. After while, you won't notice them.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's.
It's like they planted signs in our trees.
There's no question as to whether or not you can park there.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Or where you can't park.
Okay. And there's no way we could like put those on any of the other posts? You know, because I mean, it's like, so you've got two, every half block has got a no parking sign. And then you've also got the street numbering signs and the stop signs and the crossing signs and the other.
Cannot put them on stop signs. Whether or not you can combine with another sign, you may be able to, but I don't know if it would be efficient at that point. And they won't be in the right spot, so. I agree, we overassign stuff, but that's the manual that's what we're supposed to do.
I was talking to somebody down there, I don't know who it was or if they were official or not. They looked official when I asked them, but they said that like in two or three years,